Call the meeting to order for the Fargo Board of Education Tuesday, September 25th, 5:30 PM. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda is approved. We have some individuals here to share staff reports with us tonight, but no one signed up from the community to speak to us, so we'll move on to the staff reports. And our first staff report is from the FEA. Laura.
Good evening. I brought some friends with me tonight, and they've got, I said, "Pick one thing that you can show off about." And they said, "One thing?" Oh, my goodness. So, one thing from Eagles over here. They said, "I could share that new this year at Eagles is a Makerspace program. The school strategists and library media specialists have been working on getting donations and setting up the Makerspace, and it'll be open and ready for students to use at the end of this month." And over here, we've got McKinley representing. They've taken on math coaching this year. They've all been working all year hard to establish small group math routines that best support students' learning needs. And then, we've got, I promised her I'd say this, we've got Clara Barton in the house. There we go. Now, at Clara Barton, they're getting their holiday boutique ready. Kids make and sell to the public soap, jewelry, baked goods, slime, a different thing from baked goods. That's so far, and they'll keep adding to the repertoire as they go. And I'm sure we'll get more information when we get closer, but coinciding with the boutique is the holiday store, and it's a $1 store that kids can buy presents for their family people, and that's December 8th, when the stores will be open. So, got some stuff going on.
That's good. Thank you, Laura. The Indian Education Program Report, Mr. Gandhi is going to introduce. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna hand it over to Ms. Melody Seidner.
Also brought Darlene with me, too. We do a lot of work together, and event planning, and all kinds of things, which you'll hear about more in our presentation, so. And the grant that we work with, it's a consortium grant between Fargo and West Fargo Public Schools, and that's our Title VI grant. And I work directly, too, with Bob Gross and Alan Berg out of West Fargo Public Schools. So, we went through some strategic planning a few years back, and this was the purpose statement that our community and our program and the district came up with. And it's the Indian Education Program of Fargo and West Fargo Public Schools advocates for Native American student success in school while providing cultural opportunity connections for students and families. The goals of our program is to increase graduation rates, increase school attendance, and provide cultural identity and awareness. Now, this is coming from, let's see, I think I updated this beginning of the school year here, and so our Title VI student count, oh, this is going on its own. We had 247 students and 104 that we counted for this year's grant. We have about 30 tribes represented within the Fargo and West Fargo School District, on average. Our high, top three tribes is Turtle Mountain, Spirit Lake, and White Earth. Those are the top three that we have, but we have students from Oklahoma, Montana, all over the nation. How students get qualified for our program is through just self-identification of being Native American. We serve any of our Native American students. Currently, we have about 470, 73 kids in our Fargo School District, and about 300 in West Fargo Schools. But for the student count, that's a little bit different when it comes to funding. We're only able to count kids that we have a 506 form on file for, and that are compliant in our office, which means that we have their tribal enrollment number. It could be their child, the parent, or the grandparents' tribal enrollment number, and we can count them for funding. So, for instance, we had about, a little over 700 kids for this school year, but we were only able to count, I think the total count for this year was actually 359, and that's how many forms were compliant in our office. We actually probably have about more like 600 forms collected, but a lot of those forms don't have tribal enrollment numbers on them. And we serve any student in our program. We provide mentoring for grades 6 through 12, academic and attendance support through the mentoring program, but also through our liaison support that Darlene and I provide. We do a lot of home visits to bridge the gap between the school, the home, the community. And so, we help the schools set up meetings. If they can't reach the families, we'll go to homes, or if kids are missing from school, we go to the homes and find out, you know, what's going on, and if we need to connect them to resources in the community, we do that. And we end up in a lot of student meetings within the school district, and we also support our secondary caseloads for mentoring as well. She works directly with our kids in the school district, where we help support outside of the school day with phone calls and follow-up through home if needed. We also do school supplies. We carry those on hand all year round. We do a big school supply drive in the beginning of the school year. We'll help pay for ACT fees, GED fees, and then we do a lot of cultural event planning and cultural awareness, and I'll get into that a little bit more. And, you know, our staff here, we serve on a lot of different committees within our community. Whenever we've been asked to, you know, work on a community event, we'll coordinate with other Native American programs. But I, I'm not quite sure how many committees I'm sitting on right now. I haven't counted them up, but I am pretty sure it's like around five or six. Community partners, these are all places that we do referral services through. We refer to the YWCA Rape and Abuse, Stepping Stones Resources, Youth Works, Lihip, Sendica, and all of the, all of the following ones there. Every spring, we hold a reading program event, and it's to encourage reading throughout the summer. It's to help kind of bridge that gap. And so, we distribute books. We created this program for students and parents. So, the parent piece is giving them reading strategies and giving them ideas to make reading fun with their children, and to create that family literacy in the home. And so, we do that, and then what's really great and exciting for this year is that we were written into the Striving Readers Grant. And so, through that, we're able to provide a quarterly reading program. And so, I'm in the process of planning our first one right now, and then we'll be holding a couple in the summer. And so, that's really exciting for us to be able to keep those families engaged throughout the summertime. So, and so it's literacy-focused, evidence-based, and so I have some other professionals within the school district, too, that are helping me with the planning process on that piece. And that's our mentoring program, and what our mentor does is they meet with grades 6 through 12. I have one mentor in the Fargo Public Schools and one mentor in the West Fargo Public Schools. And, and so, they do a lot of goal-setting, problem-solving, and they, they really do mentor, sorry, they mentor, mentor kids on that one-on-one relationship, and provide that trusting, trusting relationship with kids. And what they do is they'll look at their school attendance and their grades, they'll pull up Power School, and they look at that right away, and that's, and then they go from there with, with goals and all of that. We do a, we do a youth leadership day every spring, and so, we did get different speakers involved in the, in the youth leadership day. We have so many, like I said, so many tribes represented, that we try to bring in different speakers across North Dakota into the program. And it's really team-building, helping them to empower them to take control of their own journey in life. And so, that's, that's what that is, and we usually involve grades 6 through 8. Actually, the guy that's pictured there, Alan Demery, up in the top left-hand corner, he was one of our presenters yesterday at Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we'll talk about that, too, in a second. But he did a wonderful job with professional development yesterday and our youth.
Some of our monthly events are planned for our Native American students, our Family Fun Night, our Indigenous Peoples' Day, which we just had, our Youth Leadership Day. We had our Back to School Night in September, School Supply Drive in August. We had regalia-making classes, and our parent committee is currently kind of working on that right now. Our winter gathering, which will be coming up in December, graduation picnic at the end of the year, and then our reading program, college field trips, and our powwows.
And I know Rebecca, you made it to our Indigenous Peoples' Day yesterday, and that was really successful. We had, and did you make it, too? Okay, I know you come to some of the. We had 93 students participate yesterday, which was really exciting. We had 46 students from the Fargo and West Fargo Schools, and more had brought over 47 kids. So, we had a really great event. Alan Demery was the presenter, and they did a bunch of activities. And then, in the afternoon, he provided professional development, and that was open to the community and promoted within the schools on Teach to Learn, and I think there was about 15 or so people that came to that, and, and they really enjoyed the presentation and, you know, thanked us for offering, offering that. And then, in the evening, we had the powwow, and we had probably close to about 500 people that came to that. And that was a real successful event that we had there. We had people coming from Turtle Mountain and three affiliated tribes as well that did the flag presentations, and, and then the, another really exciting component to this whole thing, it was just a really full day yesterday. I think we worked 14 hours yesterday, so, was the Society of Children, Book Writers and Illustrators chose us two out of 300 nominees. We were selected as the, one, or two organizations for this year to receive a donation of 1,000 books to distribute to our children. And so, they came from California and Chicago, and I believe New York, and they came in, and they helped to distribute those books last night at the, at the powwow. And there's a lot of books left over, so we're excited that we can also distribute those at our upcoming reading programs. And, and then they helped volunteer and everything. They were just a really great group of people. Did you guys have any, did you have any comments on that? What did you think about the?
Oh, it was, it was a great day. So, I was gonna give a little bit of this in my report, but I was there at the beginning for the flag presentations, and the mayor was there. And then, back again in the evening for the powwow. I, I can't, what dan, what is it where anyone is invited to dance?
Inner tribal.
Inner tribal. So, I danced in these shoes. They're not the best to dance in. But any rate, it was just, it was really great to be there and be a part of it, and see the kids, so many kids, as they were doing the flag presentation, a variety of kids kept coming into the gym, and just, you know, just seeing the participation, and the energy was positive for me. So, I was hoping, hopeful that it was positive as well for them. I did have a question for you, or maybe you could just, it's not really a question, but just if you could share a little bit, too, because there was an award given yesterday, and I know it was covered in the forum today. Willard Yellowbird received the Gladys Ray Award, and I'm wondering, is there, do you have anything that, to share on, on that?
Well, I personally got to know Gladys Ray when I first started Indian education in 2002, 2003. She was my mentor when I first started, so I had her in my life for three years, and she started the Indian Education Program in the Fargo Public Schools back in the 70s. So, it's, to me, it's just such a great honor for anyone that can, that gets that award. Her vision, you know, of educating everybody on Native American culture, and she just was an very open-arms type person. And, yeah, Willard was deserving of the award yesterday. He's done a lot in our community, sits on a lot of committees, and has helped out quite a bit, so. I don't know if that answers.
I think it's wonderful that our community has stepped up, and, and now we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, any rate, it's an opportunity for more of us to learn about our Native people. If, whether you're done with your report or not, or if people have questions, I guess that was one of your comments, you were wondering if anyone had, had questions. I'm sure you're willing to take them.
I have some other information, too, that I would like to share, just real quickly, that I think is just really good stuff going on in our district here. Well, you know, and these are just numbers here, but, you know, we served last year 45 kids in our program for mentoring in Fargo, and about 39 in West Fargo. Currently, we're about the same right now, as far as numbers go for mentoring this year. This is what I'd like to share here, is the North Dakota Native American Essential Understandings. So, this was rolled out in 2015, where they asked our elders across North Dakota, "What do you want all kids to learn about Native American culture?" And they came up with these seven teachings, and it's the sacred relatives, learning and storytelling, sharing and generosity, sense of humor, tribal policies, treaties, and sovereignty, and Native contributions. And so, once they came out with those seven teachings, educators across North Dakota came together, and they developed lesson plans that are now available for teachers online. So, if you go to teacher, teachingsofarelatives.org, that's where you can find that. And there's lesson, interactive lesson plans that they can click on, and it's available. And through that Striving Readers Grant, we've been given the opportunity this year to provide professional development on the North Dakota Native American Essential Understanding. So, we just did our first session, and we're actually gonna offer another initial first session again, because I think the date that we had kind of conflicted with some of the teacher scheduling for conferences. And so, and we want to get as many teachers as we can involved in this. So, we are gonna make another date available for teachers that were interested and couldn't make it the first session. And then, we have, it's a four-series class, so we have classes after January, too, that they'll be going to. And they really enjoyed the class, and they've already been asking for resources, and they've also asked Darlene and I to come into the classroom to help maybe with their first lesson. And so, it's very exciting. We're offering it for elementary and secondary teachers. If anyone has questions.
Thank you. John?
There's the two of you, and you mentioned you have a mentor in Fargo and one in West Fargo. How many other staff do you have working as part of this program?
We have four full-time staff, Darlene and I, and then Vanessa Alvarado is our full-time mentor here in Fargo Public Schools, and then Jordan Donner is our full-time in West Fargo. They, they pretty much, they're, you know, doing their mentor, mentoring program within the school districts. Darlene and I have a little bit more, I feel like we partner on a lot of things together. We do a lot of our event planning. As you can see, we had a full list of events that we do every year. And now, on top of that, we're also providing those professional development evenings, and we're providing a reading program event quarterly. So, we actually added 12 nights into our evenings for the school year, which is quite a bit. And so, Darlene and I pretty much do a lot of the event planning and executing of those events, and, and then also connecting with elementary buildings for the home visits and connections, and then supporting the secondary caseloads, because they, they can be a lot, you know, when you have 50 kids on a caseload for mentoring, and you're covering six different buildings. You know, we, we support those caseloads. And then, sitting on some of the community committees. And I also sit on the North Dakota Indian Education Advisory Council, and I go out to Bismarck for that, and that's where they bring tribal leaders together, and they've invited myself and Chadwick Kramer from Bismarck Public Schools to also be a part of that group, since we serve a lot of the kids off the reservations.
Melody, you had a couple of pages here about the homeless situ, homelessness situation. Could you explain a little bit?
Yeah, I just wanted you guys to kind of understand, like, maybe the population that we work with. We do work a lot with Jan Anderson, but we do have a high population of homeless students within our school district. And we still also help support that, those homeless kids, but we also, like, for different resources, we go to Jan. But then, we do a lot of connecting, too, to community for those homeless families.
I think we do as much as we can before we have Jan step in, just so it's not, you know, too much, but whatever the family's comfortable with also.
And we get to know a lot of our families through our cultural events and through our home visits, maybe for, everybody's connected within our community. So, it, it really does become a small community after a while, and half the time, we find out we're related to them. So, it's, it's really interesting, like, you know, how there's so much extended family within our community. And one of our goals is that, the reason we have all these cultural events, it's to bring the community together, because when these people come from different reservations, they feel isolated, they feel alone. It's a lot different being in an urban setting than it is on a reservation. So, resources are a lot harder to find in our area than it is on a reservation. And so, that's what we're here for, is to help those families kind of get rooted. You know, we know our biggest support is people, you know? So, if you don't have those, those connections of friends or people that can help support you if needed, we, we end up seeing those families move back to the reservation, because they try to make it here, and they can't, and they move back. And so, we're really trying to help some of those families become stable and feel like they have somebody that they can connect with. And we've heard it so many times, and you may have heard it, too, at the public hearing this last year, a couple people gave their testimony. They're like, "We don't know what we would have done without, you know, these girls here that helped, you know, support us, and when I moved to this area, you know, there wasn't a Native American center. There hasn't been for a few years now." And so, we're their connection to this community and to the Native American community.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, we just heard, was it at the last board meeting, from our student wellness and family facilitators, and it sounds like a lot of what you're doing is very similar to what they're doing with other at-risk populations in our school district. Is there any coordination between your groups, or are you overlapping a little bit, or?
Yep, we work a lot with our SWF workers. I know Darlene crosses over a lot more, I think, with the, with the SWF workers, but we do pull them in. We sometimes get their foot in the door, because we do have that relationship with the families, so we make it easier sometimes for them, to where we'll kind of call the parent and say, you know, you know, "I know you need this resource," or, you know, "There's mental health concerns," and refer them, you know, we'll say, "We have so-and-so that's gonna give you a call." And we can help transport, but they know the resources there. If you, you know, if they can't transport, we'll transport, and we work together a lot with them, so. I know you.
And for, for myself, working with the SWF workers, it's to, I come in, and it's just coming with the first initial visit, just to get the families comfortable with the SWF worker, and then establish a relationship with them, because they already know me and they feel comfortable. So, once I, you know, introduce them to the SWF worker and let them know, you know, "This person, we're all here to help you, and I'm here also." I can come to every meeting with the SWF worker, but, you know, it's getting them comfortable with the SWF worker, so, or whoever, whatever workers in the school system, just to get them the services they need.
David?
You mentioned when you started that one of your goals was to increase graduation rates. Do you know what the current graduation rate is among Native Americans?
Last year, in the report that Connie Nelson had given me, it said 54% for Native American students. And when I reported that out, too, at our tribal consultation that we do, we consult with Turtle Mountain, that's where we go, with, under ESSA, and having a federal grant, we're required to do tribal consultation. And so, because they, we have their highest population of students here, we've chosen Turtle Mountain. And so, when I had brought up our graduation rate, our Indian Ed Director from Department of Public Instruction said that that's pretty much the, the national average, is around that 50-some percent for Native students.
That's depressing. Is there anything that you see that we could do as, as Fargo and West Fargo School Districts to help increase that?
I think it really starts with, you know, we're a support program to get those kids just with school attendance, keeping them here. We're, that's a goal of ours there, but I think it's really that North Dakota Native American Essential Understandings, getting the, you know, having it taught in the schools so those kids can relate to what they're being taught. I think that's a really good start to keeping our kids interested and engaged in school. It would start there. And then, again, just having us as support, us as a support, I think, is really helpful to their school attendance, so that way they are learning and they are here.
Rebecca, I have my hand up.
Oh, she, okay, I see, I didn't see it, but I.
Can you?
I, I heard some clicking on the microphone, so, Brian, is it okay if Robin, I think she had her hand up first, I felt like she did.
Well, I've always, I've always been taught by my mother and father that ladies are first, so.
Okay, Robin, go ahead.
Okay. So, Melody, you mentioned 54% of, of Native students graduate. Is that statewide? And then, do we have Fargo stats on, on that graduation rate?
I would say that, yes, it is probably, you know, for the most part, on the average across the board with North Dakota for graduation rate. And, you know, we're aware of that, and so, we're trying to support the kids through our mentoring service and then through our liaison support. And yes, we do, we do look at grades and credits, and we do connect a lot with our school counselors on, on those things, to make sure kids are getting the credits they need to graduate.
Brian?
So, more specifically, I think I'm asking for Fargo graduation rates for Native students, but group pockets can probably share that with me later. Thank you.
Melody, could you just restate it? Because I think what you were mentioning first was the graduation rate for Fargo Schools, right?
Yep. So, for last year's graduation rate, we had 54%.
Did you get that, Robin?
I did. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about the resistance here.
No problem. Brian?
I think just to kind of add to your question, Dave, how could we do better? I took a class to get my superintendent's credential in Minnesota, Indian Education Class at Inver Hills, from Cheryl Riedinger. Very good class. She did a great job, lots of questions, interactions. Having grown up in the Stanley Berthold area, Fort Berthold, through affiliated tribes, and then Toddingham, Todd School at Rolette, up Turtle Mountain, Indian Reservation, I think just become more educated, all of us, and learn how cultures and things like that. And I'm just gonna stop there. I just, we need to, need to be more cognizant of how each of us live, and how things are, affect each other, and I think that's one way.
I think it's that whole, not saying what's wrong with you, but what happened to you with a lot of our kids, you know, and understanding, understanding the culture, like you're talking about, like, understanding a little bit more, having something you can connect with them about. I think that helps. And understanding that every kid, you know, I, I look at the, the line or the, the spectrum, you know, and there's kids that are real, you know, grew up in real urban areas, and there's, you know, traditional families, and we're all in a different place on that spectrum. I may have started out down here, but since I've been working with Indian education, I'm learning more and more about my culture as, you know, time has gone on, and I listen to our elders, and I, you know, learn about our teachings and our stories and, and stuff. So, I think, I think that's an important thing for teachers to know and for people to know, is that, you know, you can't expect a Native person to know all about their culture when, you know, our culture was, you know, stripped from us at one time. And we are trying to gain our cultural identity and learn our language, and, you know, I was told that in White Earth, for instance, that there's maybe five elders on the reservation that know their language, you know? So, we're really trying to restore our language and culture, so it's, I think that, just having that understanding is important as well.
Melody, could you talk about enrollment, enrolled in a tribe, that's what I mean? Because we have, you know, you stated, we have, we have. Because we have, you know, you stated, we have many more students actually, but are, we're only able to count to receive assistance financially if they're enrolled in a tribe. And so I know there are some, I mean, I've just learned from my experience on the Native American Commission, you know, there are some barriers and different reasons why students aren't enrolled. And could you just help us understand that just a little bit, please?
Can I let Darlene answer that one?
Okay, so I handle a lot of the 506 forms and talking to families about the 506 forms. It is if, if the grandparent, parent, or student are enrolled. For enrollment in a tribe, most tribes are, you have to be a quarter of their blood quantum. And there's not a whole lot of students that are enrolled. And then we also have a lot of Native Americans that were adopted out that they don't even know what their enrollment is. So we have a lot of forms that are, you know, compliant. And I think, what do we say, like 600? 600, or not compliant, 600 forms. And there's only, you know, like half of those that are compliant. And those are, the other forms that aren't compliant are the ones that we've, there's, we can't get blood quanums on because they just, it's, they don't have enough, you know, of the blood quantum. And we've tried everything because you can piece all the families together and try to do it that way, which we have and it takes a while and you can do it. And I actually went through it with my own children, trying to piece together Turtle Mountain, White Earth, and then my Crow Tribe. So, and we got enough, so they are enrolled. But it gets pretty complicated, but I don't know. I hope that kind of answers everybody's questions. And also, you know, some tribes are different, but most tribes ask for a quarter of blood quantum.
Even for my example, my dad wasn't on my birth certificate up until this last year. I put him, I put him on the birth certificate. And because of that, I was only considered quarter before that. And now I'm considered 47%. Not, still not enough to get my own children enrolled because my dad's dad was not on his birth certificate. So if he would have been on there, then we would have been considered more Native. And so my children cannot be enrolled because they're considered less than a quarter right now. So it's just, it is really complicated.
And then also mine, my tribal enrollment through Turtle Mountain, because I un-enrolled in Turtle Mountain, which I was half, so my kids would have had no problem. But since I un-enrolled there and went to my dad's tribe, I'm less Native American there. So my children had to go off my grandparents' Ojibwe blood from the Turtle Mountain and White Earth and piece those two together because we can only claim one type of tribe. So it gets pretty complicated.
It's all federal.
Robin?
Rebecca?
Yes.
Rebecca, so what I'm hearing here, and I spent several times, several years on the Native American Commission. It was one of my favorite committees. This is also a mental health issue and a healing issue and a trauma issue. So there are separate federal dollars that we're talking about here for our natives, but that could be rolled into our mental health issues with the state. Would that be, would that be a fair comment, Melody?
I'm not sure.
Robin, could you clarify a little bit more?
Well, hey, so we, we know that even with medical healing, there are certain, certain history practices that are sacred to your community. Also, a lot of the trauma that our Native citizens have undergone filters down through to our students. I see this as not only a Native issue, but also a mental health issue.
Right, I would, I guess I would agree with that, yeah.
No, you don't?
I do agree with it.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
And the only reason I bring it up is I think that that needs to be rolled into our conversations that we're having related to our governmental affairs and our legislative funding and things like that. This group needs to be included as well.
Thank you, Robin. Brian?
Thank you.
I was just wondering, was this the 874 money? You were trying to determine if there's enough for Impact Aid? Do we have that? Is that what we were talking about or is it the Title VI part or neither?
Was that the question for me?
Wow, kind of for more Jackie, I suppose, and maybe.
Jackie?
We don't get Impact Aid. So her only really source of funding is her Title VI dollars.
And Fargo Public Schools and West Fargo.
You know, to focus on this program.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, this has been a great discussion and we're learning. Does anyone have anything else right now? Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for giving us the time.
And I'm sure you guys are a little tired today after all of that work yesterday. Everyone was very, very busy yesterday, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gandhi, you are going to introduce the Positive School Culture Monitoring Discussion.
Yes, I am. So for Strategic Initiative III, which is Positive School Culture and Monitoring, I am going to call up Jen Sar and Alice Wamkin. And I thought they might be bringing popcorn, but maybe not. We have a video presentation.
Thank you. Well, we had a wonderful opportunity to create a sensory garden for the Eagles Autism Academy. And Jen and I just worked together and we were able to just bring many groups throughout the school district together. And it was just so wonderful to see all the groups and all of the students and just the awareness and the empathy. And I think you're just going to love the project. And we're just really so proud of all the people that really helped and the students and so.
Yeah, and I think the other thing that we just recognize is all across this district, there are teachers and groups of teachers who are working together constantly to do activities like the one we're going to be sharing with you. And sometimes they hit social media through Twitter or our Facebook page. But even beyond that, we know from the work that Alice and I get to do, we travel to the buildings very often and are in and out, getting to see all the great activities that really promote school culture. And so we're happy to be able to share this one with you.
We'll show her a video and then we'll have some questions.
We're making planter boxes for the kids at Eagles. And our teacher gave us a packet with dimensions for it and we started creating it out here. Her job is to create the planter box for the kids in wheelchairs. And he's making the ones for kids not in wheelchairs. And mine and Colton's job were to research materials and the costs and the dimensions and everything and how much we would need to buy. We are actually spending a lot less than we thought we would. And they're currently still making the drawings. CAD that we're using is Inventor. And what you can do is you can start with sketches and then put them into assemblies. So put them all together, like each of these sketches. So this, hold on, this leg is a sketch. These slats are a sketch. This side is a sketch, this side is a sketch. And then you extrude it into 3D pieces. And then, and then you assemble them and make them into a CAD drawing. So then you can see the whole dimensional view of the drawing. So I need to dimension these to show the Woods people in the other classroom that how long they need to cut it to to make the, sorry, make the dimensions for the actual garden box that we're making.
The hardest part of this project has been getting this angle for the wheelchair bed so that kids with wheelchairs can access the beds. And it's like, I still haven't quite figured out how to get this piece so that it stays exactly where it's supposed to. And it, and so we have to figure out how to get that angle so that it stays and is sturdy.
So a project like this provides many different classes from Woods to Engineering to come together and work. And it's for a good cause. It helps people in need. And it also provides educational benefits to those people in need. They get to learn about growing and planting and how to care for different plants and stuff like that. And it just, it's a good challenge for us. We'll do 150 counts and make up for that, you know?
But does it?
Because we got about.
We had 17 slats.
We have 16 here, 17, how many screws for that?
15 like normal slats.
Yeah, so that's going to be about two screws in the bottom, you're sure?
Yeah.
About one on one.
One on each side?
We should still plant more trees, that's only 40.
Would it be one on each side of the slab or?
Two on each side. I'd say one.
Okay, so then the one, so two times 630 and then.
Maybe we still plant with the 150.
Like Alice mentioned, we're talking about, you know, wanting to grow snack gardens so that some of the kids in the academy have an opportunity first to garden, but then also to enjoy the fruits of their labor, right? So that they can have a snack, so something that you might pick from a garden.
That was the very first thing they said, okay? I'm different and that's good. The next thing is the way I see and feel things may be different from some people. And that's the same with us. Sometimes things are too loud, sometimes things are too quiet. But we're all, we figure out ways to handle it. Sometimes when things are too loud, I might cover my ears. Sometimes when things are too quiet, I might turn up the sound. And that's the state that children with autism. You might see some of our students that have headphones on. And that's because sometimes things are just too loud. And for you and I, what might be loud to us might be extra loud if you have autism. And you know that maybe their head hurts or their stomach hurts. So we provide these kinds of voices, but then everyone around them has to know what voice they use and then try their best to communicate. And you can do it.
You got it. One. It takes so, so much space, you can only do one per square foot. Cantaloupe also takes about 15 to 17 weeks from the time that you plant it until a cantaloupe is ready to be eaten.
What kind of tomato? The big tomato or the cherry tomato?
Probably cherry.
Cherry, cherry.
At least one of them.
Okay, you want a cantaloupe?
Yes, one can. Can we do cantaloupe?
Okay, well, we have radish in here.
Radish should be like. Carrots right here. We're going to grow these, we're going to grow these. Over there, somewhere over there, we have nothing over there. Did anybody? We're going to go up and grab.
You mentioned possibly selecting a type. Tomato plants vary greatly in how much space they take. Some plants, and the little tag tells you, some tomato plants only need maybe that much and other tomato plants get really big and might overpower the other things. But I'm sure you would look at the label on the tomato and choose one that doesn't get so big on a plant.
One thing I do with radish is to, let's say there was a plant that you wanted in here that you didn't have room for. Was there anything? No? Well, let's say you wanted to grow everyone's favorite cauliflower. I'm just joking. What you could do, let's say you wanted to have another bell pepper.
So truly what you had the opportunity to see is a lot of various age groups across the district having the opportunity to work together for something that was pretty outstanding. It's something that truly, I mean, it brings me to tears how everybody, the teachers and the kids, just really embraced and rallied around the project. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them about this project. But again, we recognize that this kind of work is happening all across all of the buildings. And yeah, we were just truly blessed to be able to be part of this activity.
Robin, you missed out. We didn't even need popcorn because that movie was great enough. And I, I think the, the music kind of sets the tone. I was about ready to grab a Kleenex box, but any rate, it's a wonderful example of some really, really great work being done in the district. Does anyone have questions? Randy?
Do you guys know if you'll be able to get another grant for that project, or have you guys, working with N D S U and the extension department with that?
Right, so the, the opportunity will open up again in mid-February is when we can start applying again. And so we've been, you know, we've been talking about what does year two look like, and is it vegetables again, or do we start thinking about pollinator gardens, or, you know, so just thinking about what, what year two might be. But yes, there is another opportunity to write for another grant.
Awesome, thanks.
The students were so excited. I was at the Autism Academy today, and they said, tell them about, like, the kids would, this summer they were there, and they would grab carrots, and they, they tried them, they tried cucumbers, they tried strawberries.
They didn't like the radishes.
Didn't like the radishes. I don't know about the eggplant. But, and it was so neat to see the fifth graders too, because when they were talking about what they were gonna put in the garden, they kept thinking, okay, it's a sensory garden, so it has to be colorful, so they have things to look at. It has to be some plants that have, you know, a smell to them, so they can smell them and touch them. And it was just so neat to see the kids just embrace students in their own building. It was just something that we just were so blessed to, yeah, be a part of, so.
Have any of the...
For the record, I did, I did get to see it. It was beautiful, ladies. I'm watching it live.
Oh, good. There you go. Have the older students had a chance to see the impact and the interaction that those younger kids have had? If not, I think it would be great to, you know, I mean, the video is wonderful, but to see some of that in person would be an, an idea.
Those students were invited to come over the course of the summer, of course, it being their neighborhood school, but being a fifth grade group as well, as they have ventured off, some of them to Discovery and some, some of them to Carl Ben Alson based on where they're, where they're living. That hasn't been something we've been able to specifically share with them at this point.
Because it's great, we can see the connection, you know. I mean, it's just, it's just a, it's like yarn, you know, just woven through you. We can see how things are connected very easily, but I think that it would be, it's just always nice if a student can see kind of the impact down the line was my, was my final comment, but it's beautiful. Thank you so much. Should we move on to the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? And is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have one item on the business agenda, GP 12 changes. I guess it comes from me as a recommendation from the Governance Committee. Let's see, if we're, the changes are on the backside of the memo Ford, memo 41, if you picked up your items here at the, at the meeting. But any rate, GP 12 is the process for addressing board member violations. It was reviewed by the Governance Committee at the committee's September 27th meeting, and at that meeting, consensus was reached by the committee to forward the attached changes, or the changes on the back of this sheet, to the board for review and approval at this meeting. So the recommendation from the Governance Committee is that GP 12 be approved as presented. So I'd open that up for discussion. Jim?
I move we accept the changes to GP 12 as outlined in memo 41.
Second. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? All right, hearing no conversation. Anne-Marie, would you please call the roll?
Brian Nelson.
Yes.
Robin Nelson.
Yeah.
Paulson.
Yes.
Rowan Biker.
Yes.
Alrick.
Yes.
Ani.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, board reports, task force updates. Robin, I have your, I have printouts of your report. I'll, let's see, I think that's the only, well, that's the only task force that's met so far. We have one coming up later in the week. So Robin, I'll pass this out here, but while we're doing, while I'm passing it out, how about if we start with committee and liaison reports? Is that okay? All right, Brian, would you like to go ahead, please?
October 5th, last Friday, I visited Lewis and Clark Elementary, and that was a great thing. First time I'd ever seen a seventy-inch screen in a gymnasium, and, and all the schools over thirty years I've been in, I've never seen that before. And that seventy-inch screen didn't look seven inches in a gym. But then, it was a cool school. I was able to go to the City of Fargo meeting with the governor last Friday. No, was it Friday? Yeah, it was the same day. And that was the first time I had the opportunity to hear the governor and, very smart man. There's a lot of figures and facts and, and sounds like a real positive happening that's gonna happen in Fargo in the next years to come. Lot of growth, and already knew, we already had twenty percent of the students of North Dakota. But that's it.
All right, I have passed out the report, Robin, that you put together regarding the L R E Behavior Task Force. Would you like to speak to that report a little bit?
Sure, yeah. It, it was very, the first meeting had about forty people there. It was just primarily a formative meeting, figuring out the, the rules and the processes. There really wasn't a lot of meat in the content, other than figuring out our format. But the next meeting is scheduled for October 16th. It's, I apologize, it's not at D M F. It's at Wanzig. There was some discussion about D M F, so watch real careful with the locations going forward. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
David?
Robin, you made a comment in here that it was noted that there was a lack of diversity. What was the issue, and how did you, how were you correcting it?
The, the group talked about, well, the advocates table talked about a lack of diversity, and that was agreed, that there, there was. And so Dr. Flowers mentioned to, he'd reach out to different groups, and as of this point, I know that Melody Stabner, who you heard from earlier tonight, will be part of the, be part of the group going forward.
Rupak has something he'd like to add on this.
Yeah, and just to kind of speak to the, speak to that point a little bit. The formation of the committee composition, members from West Fargo, Fargo Public Schools, Rural CAS, we all got together, and we had asked various organizations of different community partners to provide a representative for the task force after we gave them membership criteria. So, for example, we asked the city to provide an individual, we asked Sanford to provide an individual, and so forth. So even ourselves, although we had decided which organization should be part of the task force, we didn't know exactly who was gonna show up, or we didn't maybe know, we didn't have familiarity with the representative from an organization. So when that point was brought up at that meeting, we all acknowledged that, okay, we should do something to kind of make sure that all voices are represented. So Fargo Public Schools and West Fargo Public Schools has reached out to multiple individuals, including Melody, to expand our task force membership and have them join as well. So as we've gotten confirmation over the past week of more individuals are gonna be part of that task force, to make sure that we have all voices represented in the room, we've updated the, the membership on the website as well, so we can be able to include them.
Does anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I think that's, that's one of the cases, that you invite people, and either they agree to attend or not. But I think that the district did a nice job of reaching out.
Jennifer?
So I didn't see anyone there representing the Dakota Boys Ranch, and I'm just wondering if, and I think it was our intention to reach out to them, if you could share any information around what's happening there, or hopefully they change their mind.
Absolutely. We did reach out to a representative from the Dakota Boys and Girls Club, and they had let us know, I think, two days before, kind of the task force, that they were not able to join us, and no person from their organization would be kind of joining. So that's all we know at this point.
A follow-up question actually to Robin, as the liaison, and in your professional career, you probably have a relationship with those folks over there as well. I'm just curious if perhaps you'd had a conversation with, with them as a follow-up?
Personally, no, I have not. I, I was not aware of all of the people that were invited, and what their responses were. I didn't feel that that was my responsibility.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Robin, for providing that report. Randy?
Would you like my, my other liaison report at this time?
Sure, go, go ahead, and if you need to, well, if you are able to stick with us for the rest of the meeting, great, but if you need to get off the phone, we understand. Go ahead, Robin.
Oh, that's fine. We just talked about the L R E B Task Force meeting. I also participated on September 28th in the Fargo South Turf Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. There was also a smaller invite that came from Aldevaron. I think it just came to both Rebecca and myself for their ribbon cutting ceremony. We were asked to forward that to Rupak. It was literally two hours before the event, so I understand why nobody could be there. But I did, I did make it to that. They just wanted to make sure the school district was included. On October 3rd, I partook in the City PTA Council Meeting. That's a planning meeting that will happen prior to every citywide meeting. I, like Brian, participated in the Governor's Main Street Initiative, which was on October 5th, and I was very pleased to see that, or hear, how much emphasis there was on youth and retention and workforce, and really most of what we talked about really revolved around youth. And the Fargo Youth Initiative was well-represented, and it was just a breath of fresh air. GAC meeting met this morning. Since I was participating here from Indianapolis, Jim will have a more thorough report for that, but the next meeting, we're gonna have a special meeting. The next meeting is November 1st at 7:30. Upcoming meetings, I will be participating again via phone from Indianapolis for the citywide PTA meeting at noon, and past that, I think we're good. I did send all these dates to Anne-Marie though in advance. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. All right, Randy?
Okay, October 1st, they had that Blue Stem Fargo Public Schools Foundation, so I saw the amazing programs they had there. There was quite a few of them, and it was pretty cool to see that. And also got to touch base with a principal I had at Ben Franklin many moons ago, so that was really cool to see him there. And then October 2nd, we had the meeting for the Fargo Youth Initiative at the City of Fargo, and they had a presentation on art, because they have some future art stuff that they would like to do with their committee, and how that is used in our city. So it was, it was a nice presentation that they had. And then the 5th, the Fargo Youth Initiative also had Tate, Ed, and Juliet talking with the governor and mayor, Mahoney and Burgum, and they discussed ideas with more stuff downtown for kids under twenty-one that can stay later, and education opportunities and internships, programs that they can do in the schools. So that was a couple of the ideas that they had, that they had shared with them. And then this morning, I had the GAC meeting, and then they also did touch on the, sorry, to get back to that October 5th collaboration between School Board and Fargo Youth Initiative, and then I'll have my school visit on the 1st of November with Centennial, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Randy. Kristy?
I've been a little incognito the last month. So October 5th, I was at the Main Street Initiative with Governor Burgum and the various community leaders, and that's all I have to report. Thank you. Jim?
As Robin indicated, GAC met this morning. Couple of other dates she mentioned, November 1st will be the next GAC meeting at 7:30 in this room. But even more important dates for you to put on your calendar, we have picked November 13th at 7:30 in the morning to be our legislative orientation breakfast, where we'll hand out, hopefully, our legislative priorities and share some information with area legislators. So please, if you're available, mark that on your calendars. And then we have chosen February 18th and 19th of next year for the dates for our joint meeting with West Fargo and our legislators out in Bismarck. We'll probably have an informal social the evening of the 18th, and then we'll have a breakfast session with whatever legislature, legislator is we can convince to come and join us on the morning of the 19th. And typically, depending upon what's going on on the calendar with the legislature, sometimes members end up going up to the, the Capitol and sitting in on committee hearings or visiting with people up there as well. So please mark November 13th on your calendar and February 18th. At the next School Board meeting, GAC will be bringing forward a recommendation for what we consider, we would like the board to consider for our legislative priorities for this year. Basically, there are two themes currently that, that we've identified. One is, of course, dealing with funding, and in particular, on-time funding, to really pay us for the students that we have in the fall as opposed to the students we had last spring. And we believe that will be the same priority from a main thrust on, on funding formula that West Fargo will be bringing forward. We're also going to highlight still the needs for additional funding for ELL and special ed. That'll be included in, in the language behind our, our message on that, assuming that's what the board chooses to go with. The second one is really about student health and safety, not so much the bulletproof glass part of that dialogue, more the social emotional learning part of that dialogue, and the fact that school districts need services that aren't currently in our, our structure, whether that's more psychologists, specialists in this area. And obviously, not every school district's going to have the resources to go hire those people. We think this one will probably fall more in the Department of Human Services than actual DPI, but we think that is the number, maybe even the number one priority for the legislature to address. Obviously, we'd like funding too, but we see that as the number one need. So those are the two that we believe will be bringing forward for the board's consideration. And if you have questions on those between now and the next board meeting, please reach out to Robin, or anybody on the GAC committee for that matter. Unfortunately, I was not able to be at the Main Street Initiative, because on October 5th, I was in Bismarck for the PK 12 Education Division Steering Committee. We tend to meet about every other month right now. It sounds like they're trying, they're trying to make this a permanent committee. I'm hoping it doesn't mean the current members are permanent members, but we'll see where that goes. There's actually gonna be legislation coming forward out of the Senate Interim Education Committee, forcing this committee to become a permanent fixture going forward, at least for the foreseeable future. A number of different things came up in discussion. A number of different things came up in discussion. Just to highlight one that came up, that kind of corresponds to our presentation we had from Melody earlier today. One of the big gaps that we clearly see in graduation rates in this state, attendance and every other aspect of measurable outcomes that we think will lead to student success certainly is the disparity in the Native American community. So that'll be front and center as part of what the Education Visioning Steering Committee is going to be working on to hopefully see if we can get some legislative fixes. Interestingly, one of the things that seems to have gotten more confusing as this process unfolds is this concept, which was one of the five strategic visions of personalized learning. It appears there are about eight different entities right now in the state with eight different definitions of what that means. So we're gonna work hard as a steering committee to come up with a single definition of what that might mean. And we might actually suggest some language changes along the way. Because it appears personalized learning is going to be treated, at least by some segment of the population, as the next version of Common Core. And we don't want that same backlash that came from that. So they're gonna really talk about maybe changing that to best practices or some other language that might diffuse this movement of what that, you're doing mumbo jumbo stuff that isn't reading and writing and shouldn't even be involved in K-12 education. So that was kind of an interesting discussion, to say the least. I do believe there is a committee, a subcommittee of the Visioning Steering Committee that's being formed to really address some of the social-emotional issues that we think need to be addressed. And I believe Dr. Gross is gonna be asked to serve on that. I don't know if you'll give him permission. I don't know if he's willing. But I threw his name in the hat, because I think he'd be great at it. I also put Dr. Agri's name forward on behalf of West Fargo. I said, she too could give us some good insights here. So I'll keep you posted. I think our next meeting for that group, I wanna say is December, but I don't have it on my calendar note here, so I think it's about two months away. I think that's it.
All right, David?
I guess the last thing I attended was the christening of the new field at South. And that has really, the timing of that thing was perfect. It's been so wet, there's been nearly continuous JV football games and soccer over there, and it's absolutely perfect. When Brian and I were standing there freezing our tushes off, if they would've thrown a dome in, it wouldn't have hurt my feelings at all. But that, that field is wonderful. It's, it's kicked it up a notch.
Jennifer?
It was cold, but it was, the sun was shining. But I did not stay because it was cold. Anyway, I was there as well, and that was fun to participate in that event. So thank you for the invitation to, to be there. And communications, the next communications meeting is going to be noon, October fifteenth. I've submitted the topics for that already, but if you do have any additional that you would like us to discuss, please know that you can always forward those to me or anyone else on the committee. So that'll be noon on the fifteenth. And the Health Insurance Committee hasn't met again since our last school board meeting, so that will be the twenty-third. That's it.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. I attended the Governance Committee as a member on the twenty-seventh of September. I was also at the Fargo South Football Field Dedication. If any other anonymous donors want to come forward, we do have two other high schools that could probably use turf fields. I was at the FPS Foundation Open House on the first, as Brandy was. Again, we are so lucky to have such an unique and excellent resource to our school district as the foundation. Becky Bakke does a really good job with that. The board that governs that organization has done a really good job of building up that fund. And my takeaway is this time or that, you know, it's, we're doing some really cool things with that. I don't, I think it's still not, doesn't have the awareness it should in our community. The innovative projects that are able to be funded from that, that, those little seeds that turn into the flowers and shrubs that turn into the big forests of really cool things happening here. I think we heard earlier tonight that there's, you know, some maker spaces in our elementary schools. And when you hear that, you know, you definitely think of STEM. Maybe you don't think of the A of the STEAM so much, but some of those media specialists or librarians are talking about how they're increasingly being, having teachers come to them asking if the literacy programs can have a turn at the three-D printers to have different projects that integrate into these things, and different coding programs and, and different creative maker things that come out of everything else in our curriculums. And these are getting integrated into our curriculums, and these, these are being able to be funded because of these innovation grants. Also, the, of course, the, the critical needs and filling some of those gaps that are being supported by the foundation. And reminding everybody that, I think every once in a while, there's this viral storm of social media of, oh geez, what are we doing to feed our kids? And if you're worried about that, I recommend that you contact the FPS Foundation and tell them, hey, I would like to help pay off negative lunch balance or make sure that kids in elementary school get their milk break, and they'll help you with that. They also support all of the needs closets in our middle schools and our high schools, which is, is really excellent. The other thing I think that not, not a lot of people understand is that the foundation is, when you make a donation there, it's tax deductible. And they're very good at organizing these kind of funding drives. So rather than anybody going to any of those other online sites where you can ask for people to give you money, where those sites take a little cut out of that, go to the foundation first if you're trying to do any kind of school fundraising things. And, and they can help you with that, and they, the cause will get all of those donations. So it's, it's, again, it's really great. Keep the FPS Foundation in your mind when you're making your giving plans. And then back on the fourth, I was able to visit Jefferson Elementary School as part of my visits, and loved that school. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the governor's thing. I was not able to get to Indigenous Peoples' Day yesterday because coming out with this nasty cold, so I apologize if any of you get it from me tonight. I think I'm on the downside, and I'm not contagious anymore, and so that's why I came here tonight. But that's the end of my report, so I'll let you all go.
Missy, you probably won't catch it. You're sitting two seats away from John, so you're pretty safe. Oh, gosh. Okay, well, I also just wanna run down kind of what I have been at lately, the South High Football Field Dedication on the twenty-eighth. Also, the foundation event at Blue STEM, so echoing what Brandy and John have said. I spent a lot of time talking to some of the kids on, about their Lego projects. And I can't remember the, it was the booth right next to the Lego project. It's, or the robotics project, but then, but it's almost, they're almost like Legos, John or Brandy. Maybe you remember, but you can, you can build, build with those as well, and I can't, Rupak, you know?
It was a robotics project, so it was a robotics team that went to Nationals last year.
But what, but the group right next to them, it was a different, and I have it, I have it written down for notes down the road, but of course, I don't have those with me here tonight. It would've been very handy to have that with me tonight. But any rate, very fun to talk to those kids. And plus, the parents that are leading some of these opportunities, especially I was talking to one regarding the robotics. And they're just so, the parents are so excited, you know, and we need that. We need that parental involvement, and it's great that, for those that have the time to be able to do that. Chamber Eggs and Issues, also the Main Street Initiative with Governor Burgum. And it was, it was really great that those, that the three students were there. One thing that I'd like us to continue to talk about, we will, in the Communications Committee, is youth involvement. And however we decide to incorporate, you know, youth involvement with decisions that we are making as a board, or I guess whatever we end up deciding. But I think it was pretty clear that, well, at least those three students, they're representing many others. They want to be involved, they want to do things, they want to help, but they don't know a lot about what's going on. And they want to be involved in decisions that impact their lives, on programs and policies and things that are going on within their schools. So I think it's just figuring out a way to provide information to them in, in a way that is, that they would like to receive it. And, and opportunities for participation. And there was so much of that that was discussed at the National Convention, too. So just wanted to pass that on. This is the flyer that was for Indigenous Peoples' Day. That was such a fun event. This is the third annual event. And again, just great to see the students participating in that and happy that we are able to collaborate with many other organizations to put that on. We have, let's see, I was at GAC this morning. Thanks for the great report, Jim. We have homework due on the seventeenth, GP monitoring and superintendent evaluation. Governance Committee meets on the twenty-fourth at seven thirty in the morning. And if we don't have, if there's not an appointment made with me yet regarding, I talked at the last board meeting about either having a phone conversation or sitting down and going through the information from our last GP monitoring. If you could just get in contact with me, that would be great. If, if you don't contact me, maybe it's that you don't feel that there needs to be that, you know, that conversation. But I definitely am open to having those conversations. And I believe that is it. Our next regular board meeting is October twenty-third. Thank you, and have a great night.